Twenty twenty three Board of Equalization meeting to order. First item is roll call. Mr. Brett Towns.
Present.
Ms. Eleanor Thompson.
Right now.
And I'm Patrick Crowley, and I'm here. Notice of meeting was properly hosted. We have two properties on the agenda today. The first one is B O E eighty one. It's account number ending in seven, three, eight, zero. It's the property of twenty five oh one Northwest Grand Boulevard. It looks like the assessor assessed this property at two million four hundred and fifty one thousand, and the taxpayer is asking for one million nine hundred and fifty thousand. Are those numbers correct?
That is correct.
Where's our taxpayer?
Yeah, so if y'all would like to come up and have a seat here.
Sorry. That's all.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Sorry, I've.
You're fine.
Did you hear they know what's that?
I did.
Okay. This, what is it? Urban View Living?
Yes, that's my client's, my client's trust.
Trust?
Yes, it actually is the property I own.
What's, what, what is this property?
It's a home.
Oh, it's a home.
Yes, yes, sir. It's a residence.
All right. Tell us what you want to know about this property.
Well, may I pass out a little packet for y'all?
Was it presented at the informal hearing?
There was no, well, we just had a phone hearing.
Yeah. If it, this is an appeal from the.
Right. Right.
Informal.
I presented, I believe, at the informal hearing. They had my appraisal and the, the Realtor's letter.
And the, the broker's opinion?
And the appraisal, yes, I gave.
If that's what, is that what you're presenting?
Those are two of the things.
Let's do this.
Yes.
First, give it to the assessor and let him tell me whether or not this evidence was already when the attorney is here.
Okay. We don't have that appraisal. We discussed.
Yes, we did, yes.
Okay.
And here's the opinion.
Yes, we did receive this too.
And this is yours.
Yes, yeah, we got that, yeah.
And then I just did a demonstrative summarizing everything.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Do you, do you, do you need a copy of this?
Um, I don't have a, if you have a copy of this.
Yes, yeah. And then, well, you can go ahead.
Okay. Thank you.
So, yeah. So, all that's acceptable?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, all that was presented at the informal.
Yes, sir.
We can accept those, that packet?
May I present these to the board?
Yeah. First, it goes to the.
I'm sorry, I didn't, didn't explain anything. Wasn't presenting anything new. The only thing new that the assessor has not seen, which I just showed him is, I just did a summary, a table summary of all the numbers, so that it'd be easy for the board to, to look at.
Okay. Well, the assessor says he had all this information at the informal in, in one form or another.
Yes.
So, all right. We can, we can accept this evidence since it was presented at the.
Yes, yes. Well, it's, my client's position is, is very simple. She received the assessment, and then she thought it was too high based on what the mark, what had happened to the markets since she purchased the property. She did pay two point four, five million for the property. But as I think everybody knows, price paid doesn't necessarily equal value. And she believed that the value of the property had decreased, and it was not worth two point four, five million, the price that she paid.
When did she purchase it?
In June of two thousand twenty two. I believe it was the fifteenth of June, but, but it was June of two thousand twenty two.
Right.
And so, in March of two thousand twenty three, she had an appraisal done, and she also had a broker's opinion done. And they came in, I believe, within, I, I gave away one of my packets, but I believe they came in within fifty thousand dollars of each other. The appraisal was one point nine, five million, and the broker's opinion was two million dollars.
Okay.
And then.
The problem will be that it was done in twenty three.
I, I understand.
And we're looking at January first of twenty three and not a day after.
I, I understand. And if, if, if that's the end of the discussion, then if you want me to stop, I'll stop. But if you want me to present, I understood from, from speaking to the assessor that it was, that if we would have procured the appraisal and the broker's opinion on December thirty first instead of March of twenty three, I don't know if there's a rule or if that's binding on the board. But in any event, if you want me to continue, I, I will.
Yeah, go ahead and tell us everything you want to know.
Sure, sure.
That was, that at least that was in front of the, I don't guess this was at the informal because it, you didn't get it until twenty three.
It wasn't the informal.
It was?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes. We had the informal hearing, was it in?
Oh, yeah.
April of two thousand twenty three, I believe it was?
Yeah.
March, yeah, it was, yeah, March of twenty three.
March of twenty three, okay. It was after the appraisals done, yes.
All right.
Because they, they had those. And then, what I have done is I have taken the appraisals. If you'll go to the very last page of your packet, I've taken the appraisals, and I have made a chart of all of the comps and different values and prices per square foot. And what I have also done is I have corrected pretty significant errors on the part of the assessor. If you look at their, and that's part of my packet, if you look at their appraisal, or what I call their appraisal, their market analysis, the first three comps on that sheet are the comps that my client's appraiser used. The last two are the two comps that the assessor used. And if you look at their comp sheet, they made some mistakes on the percentages, and the adjustments are not correct. If you look at twenty seven sixteen Elmhurst, actually, the adjustment should have been a little bit higher, about five thousand dollars higher. But if you look at twenty four ten Northwest Grand, the adjustments were a hundred and almost ninety thousand dollars off. They should have been about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars lower. They adjusted twenty four ten, they being the assessor, adjusted twenty four ten Northwest Grand. Their total adjustments were three hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and seventy five dollars. But I don't know if it was a math error. I discussed this with one of the, in the assessor's office, and they told me, yes, we, we obviously made a mistake, but we didn't get into how. But I'm just pointing that out to show that their adjusted price per square foot is not accurate, and I believe it is accurate on this summary, because the adjustment should have been a hundred and sixty eight thousand, seventy five dollars, not three hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and seventy five dollars. And if you look at the percentages, they adjusted it at six point nine percent. It should have been at eight point zero one percent. And all you have to do is do the math, and you come back into the numbers. This isn't my opinion. This is just how the math works. And so, if you average, so what I did for this exhibit was I took the average price per square foot of all of the comps, the three comps that my client's appraiser used, and the two comps that the assessor used, and I adjusted those for the proper price per square foot, if you correct for the mistakes, and that is three hundred and forty one dollars and twenty two cents. If you multiply that by the square footage of the subject property, you come up with one million nine hundred and ninety three dollars, one million nine hundred and ninety three thousand, four hundred and seven dollars, which, again, it's just the way the math, math works, you can't manipulate the numbers. It comes extremely close to what the price was per the appraisal of one point nine, five million, and extremely close to the Realtor's opinion. So, I don't think that's coincidental. I think that you've got five comps here, the adjusted values or adjusted price per square foot. Average is three hundred and forty one dollars and twenty two cents multiplied by the square footage, and it comes out to within a few thousand dollars of what my client requesting that the property be reassessed to. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to, happy to answer them.
If that's all you got. Any questions for the board to the taxpayer's agent at this point?
I, I guess when I go back to what was, what the property was paid or purchased for in June, two point four, five million, and now everything was elevated at that time, I think that's what you're.
That's what I'm, that's, yeah, I mean, it's just, it's, it's almost, within days almost of, of, well, the loan was locked, the rate was locked in, I'm assuming, back in May, probably. Within a month or two, we all know what happened to rates, and we know what's happened to the market, and so, we believe that the property is, again, price doesn't necessarily equate value, although it is an indicator.
Right.
My client believes that, in this case, that the price she paid is not reflective of the actual value of this property. And again, she had an appraisal, she had a broker's opinion, and even if you just take and add in the county's adjusted price per square foot to all of the other comps and average it, it, you know, I, I didn't do anything, I prepared this exhibit, I didn't do anything to manipulate the numbers, it comes out at one point nine, nine, three million.
Right.
Which is within a couple of three thousand dollars of the appraisal and of the broker's opinion, so.
Do you have any evidence to show that in June of twenty two, when your client purchased this property, that she was under any kind of direct or force to make this?
No, sir.
So, this is a willing buyer.
Correct.
From a willing seller.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Yes.
Is that it? We'll, the way we do this, we'll hear from you, then hear the assessor, and then any response that you have.
Sure.
Okay? Are, are you coming through right now?
I must have any more questions. Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, any questions of the agent from the board? All right, we'll hear from the assessor.
Okay, so, yeah, this, this was an invalid purchase in July of twenty two of one point six million. Because Ms. Braden, obviously, the owner of this property, she purchased it from her own self, because she's also the representing manager, she's also the manager of Parkview Commercial. And so, they made the purchase of two point four, five million, and now they're wanting it to be at one point six million.
No, no, that's not, I'm, I'm sorry.
One point nine.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, you want it to be at one point nine, I apologize, yes.
One point nine five.
Yeah, I did. So, and I'm now looking at the, the comps that you used. The original one we had showed two thousand five Huntington Avenue, or two thousand eight Huntington Avenue, and now it says two thousand five.
That was a typo, yes.
Okay. So, I had originally go with that, and that was an invalid purchase back in two thousand twelve, so we had to eliminate that. But we're using, in, in this comparables, they use their own, their own home, so we use their own home plus two others that we provided, where the square footages are not all that far off from the subject. And we come out with the average sales adjusted value of two million, four hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars, and that's using the three comps that we provided. And we feel that is more than enough, more than adequate enough for supporting their current value. We just feel that the valid purchase of two point four, five is enough evidence to not lower it.
Okay. And when you talk, you say an invalid sale, what, what does that mean for anybody that doesn't?
So, Ms. Braden is the owner of this property.
Okay.
She is also, according to the deed, she is also the manager of Parkview Commercial LLC.
Okay.
So, she originally, originally paid two point four, five for it, and then now they're saying that it needs to be one point six. So, it's basically a, it's a transfer in, it's a tran, it's an invalid transfer from Parkview Commercial to Urban View.
That's not my client's position at all. Again, it's not one point six, it's one point nine five.
No, I understand, I understand that it's, it's.
She's not asking, she's not trying to contend that she paid one point six million dollars for this property. She paid two point four, five million for its property.
Yeah.
You can, you can call it whatever you want, but she acknowledges, she's not trying to pretend that she paid one point six million dollars for this property.
Okay.
She, she paid and acknowledged it at two point four, five.
If you don't mind, please let the assessor finish, and then we'll. I think he's using the figures from the property record.
I can clarify that, what happened, if you'd like for me to.
Well, let's, let's wait till the assessor's done, and then we'll, we can hear from both of it.
Yeah, I do have, and I just said, I'll, let me rephrase, yeah, we do have the value here, they're requesting one point nine, five million, I apologize about that. They purchased it for one point six after the, after the transfer, but what I'm saying is they do, or they are asking for one point nine, five, I do have that here. But other than the solid evidence of two point four, five, there's just really nothing more we can do to go below that.
Okay.
So, at this current moment, I have nothing else to say.
All right, go ahead, and your, your value of two point four, five million, or two billion, four hundred and fifty one thousand, be precise.
Yes, sir.
Uh, is based on a willing buyer and a willing seller?
Correct.
Uh, in June of twenty two.
That is correct.
Okay. All right. And that's, you, nothing else at this point?
Not at this current moment, correct.
Okay. Well, you don't get another shot.
Okay.
We're going to hear from him.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, either one of you would.
Well, just, let, let me add just a couple of things. What is your name, sir? I'm sorry.
Oh, for the record, my name is Michael Frangione, and since we're on record right now, I do want to specify that this is Zachary Neff. He will be presenting, he may speak on some of this here in a moment, if maybe, if not, he will be presenting the case on the second one, so I just wanted to get that on the record.
Mr. Frangione, you, you acknowledge with you that the adjustments on twenty four, ten Northwest Grand were significantly off.
Can I, can I reply to that? Uh, so, I mean, he's working with averages, it seems like, correct?
No, sir. No. I, I, I went through line by line on your adjustments on twenty four, ten Northwest Grand Boulevard, and applied the percentages that you wrote in the margin, and those percentages don't equate to the three hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and seventy five dollars of adjustments that you arrived at. They equate to a hundred and sixty eight thousand, seventy five dollars.
So, our percentages come from model-generated values. Whenever we compute the value of a property, we use model values from a linear regression.
That's in the program, I guess.
Yes. So, yeah, that's, that's how these percentages are getting computed, is from the model.
I'm not arguing that the percentages are incorrect. I can't do that, that's impossible. What I'm telling you is if you multiply those percentages by, the easy way to do it is to add up all the percentages, all right? And if you add up all the percentages, it comes out to eight point zero one percent net adjustment, and you all adjusted it at sixteen point nine percent. It's just math. I understand that I can't challenge the percentages.
So, these percentages are going to have different adjustments, given on what, like, we're not going to add an adjustment for living area and add it to a quality grade like that, it just, it doesn't work like that.
I understand. But if you take the percentages, and I had this discussion, I don't know if it was with you or with somebody on the phone, and whoever I had the discussion with on the phone acknowledged that those were incorrect, and I don't know why they're incorrect, they were slightly incorrect on twenty seven sixteen Elmhurst, but they were way off on twenty four, ten Northwest Grand.
It's going to be a percentage based on the specific variable, not the overall property, so you can't just add the, the percentages.
Well, you could do it line on, by line, I mean, it comes out the exact same way, because one plus one always equals two.
Okay. Well.
Anyway, that's, that's, and that's all I have to say. Now, I'd like my client to explain the discrepancy between the one point six million and the two point four, five million.
I purchased a property for two point four, five million, and then I refinanced it, and when I refinanced it, I put it in the name of my living trust, and the one point six million is the amount of mortgage that's on the house.
So, that has nothing to do with the purchase.
Has nothing to do with the purchase price.
I got you. Yeah. They're not going to loan you the exact, the whole value of anything, so.
So, the assessor, when I, when I say that she bought it for one point six million, that's just, that's just another mistake that they made, they're just wrong.
Okay.
Well, I, I think the assessor acknowledged the purchase price that they're dealing with is the two point four, five. The two, two numbers we're dealing with are theirs, yours.
Sure.
You know, one nine five, two four five, and that's.
I just, he used the word false sale, and that's just not correct.
Well, the, the assessor's position, as I understand it, is they use a computer program that's designed to make it average for, I mean, equal for all the property in the county, and that, you know, kind of depends on neighborhood, where your property's at. It's going to be far cry different from, you know, down there on the south side somewhere.
Sure.
So, unless it's in that, whatever, I forgot.
Riverdale, maybe.
Yeah, Riverdale. But anyway. I guess, I can't speak for the rest of the board, but for me, the, you know, doing this math thing is like a three-card Monte deal. The purchase price was two point four, five million in June, and I can't get past that, I just can't. That's.
I understand.
Just generally what we use, or I use anyway, to decide what a, the market value of property is, is what is, what would a willing buyer pay a willing seller? And in this case, it's two point four, five million in June.
True.
And maybe the market has, had changed, it probably changed more after the first than it did before, because it was kind of a, a rocket ride.
Sure.
But at any rate, that's, that's what I look at, is what's, what would a willing buyer pay a willing seller? And in this case, it's two point four, five million. That, that's kind of long and short of it.
And I, and I.
Do some math things all day long, I can't, can't get past that.
And the next, the purpose of that was just to show value. Again, I could go down and I could say, I've got to have my childhood home, all right? And I've just got to have it. And I know that the appraisal says it's worth a hundred thousand dollars, but they're never going to sell it unless I pay them two. Well, to me, that doesn't mean that that house is now worth two hundred thousand dollars because I'm a willing buyer and they're a willing seller. It's all about value, and that's what I was trying to show, and that's what my client was trying to show, by getting the appraisal, by getting the broker's opinion, and by doing this math, and, and I appreciate what you're saying, but there's, there's no way to manipulate these numbers, they are what they are. Now, if it's the board's position that, that, you know, well, this is two thousand twenty three and that was two thousand twenty two, I, I understand and appreciate that, and maybe my client decides to come back next year, but depending upon what the assessment is, but we'll see. But anyway, we still, my client still contends that the assessed value ought to be one point nine, five million.
I understand. Okay. Anything else from the assessor?
Anything to add?
Okay. And we're done here?
We, for the applicant, I don't have anything else.
Okay.
No, sir.
All right. Anything else you want to add? All right. I'm going to close the hearing on B O E number eighty one, and open up the hearing on B O E one ninety eight, which is the property seven oh one North Hudson, the jet.
No, you all announced your ruling at some late.
Monday.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I, I didn't know if you voted now, or, yeah, I, I don't know the process, I've never, I'm a lawyer, but I'm, I'm, I'm in court, but never been before the Board of Equalization.
I understand. Yeah, we're, we've got kind of last minute rush has hit us, and we, we have to be done on the thirty first of July on that statute, that's, I mean, that's our, that's our inlet. Now, we could get past it, but we'd have to have approval or some board. But at any rate, we will send the letter out Monday, we're going to have all these properties, what we call decision day, and you will get a letter saying what the board agreed or disagreed on, and.
Well, thank you all very much for your time. I can say I'm having my client, that she appreciates it very much, and I appreciate it, and it's been a pleasant experience. Thank you very much.
Well, appreciate your preparation, you gave us some, some things to think about, but, well, I hope so. All right. And thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, of course.
Good to talk with you.
Yes.
Nice to meet you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. John Reed.
Mr. Lee, sir.
Okay. You're on B O E one ninety eight, which is account number, and again, one zero seven zero Hudson condominium, at seven oh one North Hudson, in particular, number four oh two, and it looks like Persimmon, Persimmon Investments owns this, and this was a hard one to figure out because your, your appellate sheet was not completely filled out properly. But here's a guess, and the assessor can tell me, right or wrong, six hundred and sixty eight thousand?
Oh, yes. This is for seven oh one North Hudson, unit four oh two?
Yes.
Uh, yes, we ran some comps and.
Wait a minute, I just need that figure. Is that six hundred and sixty eight thousand, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And taxpayer's asking for five hundred and eighty nine thousand?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, well, we got our numbers right. All right, let's, first we'll hear from you, then we'll hear from the assessor, and then you have a chance to respond.
Sure.
Okay?
Well, first of all, I've been a resident of Oklahoma County for fifteen years, I've never disputed a property value before, so I've always agreed with the assessors, where in this particular instance, I purchased this condominium in November for five hundred and forty thousand dollars.
November of?
Twenty twenty two.
Okay.
So, just.
For how much?
Five, four, zero, 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 five, excuse me, five hundred and forty thousand.
Five hundred and forty thousand either, okay?
And going back to your earlier comment, which is good indicator of the market value, is what a willing buyer would pay a willing seller, and we agreed at a price of five hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Okay?
As contest, we looked at condos all year last year, dozens and dozens of condos all over Oklahoma County. This was by far one of the most expensive per square feet, even at the, at the five forty. So, we're, we're paying a premium for that property. The assessor had appraised it last year or assessed it at five eighty nine.
Okay.
And so, that's where I'm back at, the five eighty nine is, I don't think this property has increased or appreciated in value more than that five eighty nine for last year.
Seventy nine thousand.
I'm sorry, ma'am?
Seventy nine thousand.
Seventy nine thousand. What's interesting about this, and why I think there, maybe they had some difficulty in assessing the value, was they originally sent me an appraised value of seven forty one point five. And I called and said, there's no way this property increased twenty six percent in a down economy, and they lowered it to six sixty eight. So, they did move off that number, but everything that I researched, you look at, the, only one of their property has sold in that building within a year. It sold for a lower square footage price than mine. There's one listed. There's one listed today that's even lower than that. So these, it's going the wrong direction. And somehow they're coming up with this thing is increased, even at the new number, over thirteen percent in one year. I just don't, that doesn't reconcile with my logic and the data that I'm seeing for this condominium.
All right. Anything else right now?
So my position is I believe the five eighty-nine that it was appraised at or assessed at last year is still a very appropriate number based on my purchase, other transactions in the building, and market conditions.
Okay. We'll hear from the assessor now.
All right. So we do not have very many sales, especially in this condo complex. I think there was three or four, including yours, within this condo complex. And yours consisted of two of them, one of them for two hundred and nineteen, or in two hundred, in two thousand nineteen, sold for five hundred and ninety-five thousand. And in two thousand twenty-two, it sold for five hundred and forty thousand. I had some questions as far as that sale price because it was going down during that time. I did reach out and send a letter to the owner as far as the, the purchase, the validity, validity of the purchase. There were some problems as far as the unit number was not on the deed. Therefore, we did not have the unit number, so I could not reach out to them. We did get that fixed and allowed for the late appeal. So since I did not hear back from that two thousand twenty-two sale, I went ahead and marked that invalid since I could not find very much information on that sale. Had no reply or anything. So we ran comps after it, which here are the comps. We ran the comps on the property and got a median value of six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, and that's where we ended up at.
Okay. Now, you're, you're saying the sale, when he purchased his price in November of twenty-two, that that was invalid?
Yes.
Why?
I could not find information online for it, and whenever I reached out to them, I could not get a reply. So I had no way to verify the sale.
One way or the other?
One way or the other.
No stamps, no nothing like that.
There was the deed, and I did look at the deed, so.
And what did deed tell you?
The deed, the doc stamps match, and it was a warranty deed.
The doc stamps match the five forty.
Yeah, just, oh, I mean, yeah, just for the sale price.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
That's all.
Okay. We're talking about, let's see, November twenty-second, that's the day JFK was killed, I believe. The, a hundred years ago.
It's five weeks. Till the end of the year.
Five hundred and forty thousand at the end of November. In one month, you're at six hundred and sixty-eight thousand. And the taxpayer has agreed to a forty-nine thousand dollar increase in that one month. Because we're looking at January first and not beyond that. And the purchase price, as I've told others, is the best indicator of assuming a willing buyer and a willing seller. You're, you have no evidence to show that was not the case. I mean, you're, it seems to me that your presumption that it's invalid might be a little unfair. Because you've got to have some evidence, you know, and, and Mr. Reed is saying he, it was a willing seller, and you were a willing buyer.
Yes, sir.
Even though you now think, okay, well, he maybe paid a little too much, but still. Five hundred and eighty-nine thousand in one month. And that's, market was still going up before the end of the year, maybe, but it had slowed quite a bit. And then after the first, it was taking, so, but we don't consider that.
That's nineteen point one percent increase in five weeks.
Do what?
Nineteen point one percent increase in five weeks.
For?
The value.
Value.
For the taxpayer's value?
Yes.
Did you figure out the assessor's?
Well, no, that's, that's the difference between the purchase price and the assessor's value that they based on.
Oh, okay. All right. I'm sorry, I'm maybe talking too much here. Anything from the board? Anything else that you want to tell us?
I think you said it well. You know, as you pointed out, I'm willing to, I'm agreeable to a much higher assessment than what I paid, but I need the six sixty-eight, so it's way out of line. There's nothing to support it, so that, that's my case.
Okay. Well, what we'll do is Monday, oh, we get, we'll need to announce. All right, we're going to close the hearing on BOE one ninety-eight, which is the account number ending in one zero seven zero. And Monday, July thirty-first, the last absolute day that this board can meet without getting an extension. We'll send the letter out.
Okay.
And tell you what our decision was. We, you know, whether we agree or disagree, or whatever it is, we got to come to an agreement at any rate on a value.
Okay. Fair enough.
You'll get that letter probably sometime toward the end of the week. All right. Anything else from the board? The assessor, we're done? Okay. Close the hearing on BOE one ninety-eight. That's the last one on the doct. We have a doct today.
Move the adjourn.
Yeah, citizens, hold no citizens.
Yep. Same.
All who favor I.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, sir.
Okay, I'll be replying.
Oh, you will? Awesome.
They got it moved.
All righty.
We done replying?